We have the presentation. This is what I have. Sorry, I have so many paperwork in front of me today. I am absolutely lost.
This is under me?
Under you.
Yes. So I have completed the motion to take all the orders.
Can you please have the motion to take our food service director out of order? So we can continue to enjoy the meal.
So moved.
So moved. Second?
Second.
All is okay. All right. Joy, we have something to do.
Thank you. So I'd like to introduce our new food service director. She began with us during this school year. And I don't know if I saw her this morning, Jason, but I may be going away. So she was kind enough to bring for us this evening one of her new breakfast entrees at the middle school. And these are absolutely adorable banana splits. And we've got bananas, and we've got yogurt, and we've got fruit, and then some granola. And it actually counts as a full serving of breakfast. It's very popular. The first day she offered them, she had five left over. And she was kind enough to bring them over to my office. And I barely got one. There's this huge... Actually, I don't think you got a big joke. Jill did not move fast enough. But they're wonderful. And she's made a lot of great changes on the menu in terms of her record keeping. And we asked her to come to share some of the changes that she's made. We're really feeling very good about the changes, the financial impact from those changes that they've made, and probably, most importantly, the better food choices that our students are having with lunch. So we have middle school, we have breakfast now at the middle school. It has been a big hit. We've actually received a couple of emails from teachers specifically saying that they have noticed a big difference in some students that are now breakfast regulars. A lot of students were not at the house, have become teenagers, and don't take the time to eat anything, or take an apple or something that's thrown out. And we got a really nice email from a parent also. Actually, that was commenting on how much happier she feels her child is now that they're getting breakfast at the middle school. The hope is to begin breakfast at the high school next year. And I can stop talking now because I got the power going. But I could have kept going, really. It was perfect. So this is Megan Erhols.
Thank you for having me. So as Joy mentioned, I'm the new basketball attrition or food service director here for Silver Lake. So I do Silver Lake, high school, middle school, Denneit, and the Kingston schools. So I've really enjoyed my time here so far. So I'm glad to have this opportunity to talk to you a little bit, tell you a little bit about what I've done and what I hope to do next year. So I just have a short little slideshow. So some of the changes that I've made. I've done some changes since I've come. I looked at the labor hours and the number of people we had at each school and the hours they were working. So this October, we had a current six-hour worker retire. So rather than replace the six-hour person, I hired two, a three-and-a-half, and a three-hour employee, and eliminated a three-hour permanent substitute position that they had here at the high school. So one of the reasons that I was looking closely at the labor is just to kind of bring the budget more in line with what we hope it should be. And then also, we had a three-hour labor reduction at the middle school. So that was something when the six-hour person retired, we offered that person opportunity to transfer over to the high school. Therefore, reducing the labor hours at the middle school, bring those more in line with where they should be. And then also kind of bringing the high school more in line with where they should be. So and then at Denneit, I hired... There was only one official person working at Denneit, it was a six-hour person. And the three-hour person was kind of a substitute. So they weren't an official employee. So they weren't getting paid for holidays and sick days and things like that. So working with Joy and Christine, we made the decision to make that person an official employee. So that all brought all of those schools more in line with what the industry recommendations for meals per labor hour are. So in addition to that, for the labor changes, it's probably not necessarily a change. But one of the things I want to make sure is that they're all meeting the USDA requirements for the professional standards. So depending on how many hours per day each school nutrition person works, they're required to meet a certain number of PD hours per year. So for example, managers need 10 hours per year. If they work four hours or less, I want to say it's, I think it's four or six hours of education piece per year. So one of the more important pieces that we do is serve safe. So that's just making sure that all of our school nutrition workers are aware of how to serve safe food. So keeping it free from contaminants and bacteria and all that good stuff. So that's an eight-hour class that they have to take and renew every five years. And one of the first classes we had was an allergy awareness class. So again, that's a two-hour class that again trains the staff on what to look for and how to make sure that we're avoiding cross-contact and making sure that food we serve is safe for the students who have food allergies in our schools as well. So some of the other things we've done is a night skills class. And again, with Christine's help, chemical and OSHA training. So always making sure they're aware of how to use chemicals safely and make sure, again, those are stored properly and things like that. So the little picture there is some mushroom radishes. That's just a clip-art picture. But that is one of the things that some of the staff learned how to do, is make little mushrooms out of radishes. So right after the night skills class at high school, salad bar was going with those little mushrooms. So I've made some menu and food changes. I'm trying to essentially have the same menu for all five schools that I oversee. So that kind of helps with managing inventory, making sure they're all on the same page. So if they do need to borrow between schools, well, between the Silver Lake schools and between the Kingston schools, they don't borrow between because they are two separate budgets. But it kind of helps with managing inventory. So again, if one school has 10 cases of hamburgers and another school has two, we can move those over rather than buying more hamburgers here and having those hamburgers over here last, you know, take a long time to go through. So all the menus that I write are compliant with the national school lunch program and school breakfast program recommendations. So for example, the banana split you're enjoying now contains at least a half cup of fruit, at least two ounces of meat alternate, which is essentially protein, which is the yogurt. And then the granola counts as the grain. So that comes as a complete breakfast. So if a kid took this as part of their breakfast, they could also take another juice and a milk. And there you go, there's their meal. So it's a nice, quick grab and go meal for the kids. So and this is a picture down here of one of the lunches we have. It's not the best color. But those are all utilizing USDA commodities. So USDA sliced apples, corn, sweet potato fries, USDA sliced chicken, and then some barbecue sauce. A little pudding is a commodity, but it's just an extra little thing to entice the kids to buy the meal. So it's just balancing some of those lower-cost items with some of the items that are a little bit higher in price. And one of those examples that we taste tested with the kids over at KIS in the high school was fish and chips from North Coast Tea Foods. So that's a whole muscle, like everyone would call it whole muscle, but a real fish fillet. So if you cut into it, it's a real fish fillet. It's not the fish steak cut and processed. So trying to balance some of that real food, you know, with also some of the more processed. Trying to do some more scratch cooking. So for example, utilizing, making our own mac and cheese with using our own cheese, making our cheese sauce, making our lasagna from scratch, making our tacos and our sloppy joes from ground beef rather than just getting pre-cooked beef crumbles. And then trying to introduce some other new things. So for example, candy chickpeas with honey and cinnamon. And that's actually something that kids really enjoy. So today we had kale chips. And I actually had, I was at KIS. One of the girls came through, it was like, "Oh, kale chips. Can I take two?" It's like, "Sure, go ahead, take two." So just kind of focusing on that, trying to introduce some of those new things and trying to do some taste tests as we go. So for example, we taste tested some of these banana splits and then some of the other breakfast items with the kids at the middle school before we started. So they could kind of be exposed to what we were offering and be exposed to the program. So again, and then we also participated in the MAPC, it's the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, fresh produce bin. So that's something the previous director had jumped on. I was very excited to see that he was on that when I came here. So I think that's resulted in significant cost savings for our fresh produce, which is really nice. And just utilizing all of that collaborative purchasing to make sure we're getting the best bang for our buck when we make those purchases. So I've taken over the purchasing of all the groceries. Again, to make sure I manage what you need school and make sure that we're buying things that are on the bid as opposed to a chicken patty that we might be paying $20 more per case for because it's not on the bid. And then participating in the collaboratives to make sure that what's on the bid is the food that we want, that I feel is good and nutritious and, you know, as few additives as possible for the kids. So some of the changes at the high school in particular, as I mentioned, we had some labor changes. So back in January, I had a little bit of a, like a small focus group with some of the kids. So I changed, I offered, I had a blind taste test with the chicken patty we had been using versus one that was a little bit more of an all-white meat chicken. I think, I don't remember if at the time I had it contained soy, but I tried to look for those with fewer additives. So it's more of real chicken rather than sponge chicken. And sure enough, the kids would definitely tell like, yeah, we want this one, this one's a lot better. So it is a little bit more money, but I also kind of looked at it like, there's quality. We want to try to make sure we're offering quality food for the kids as well. So we did switch to a different chicken patty. And we changed the service format. So it used to be there is the main lunch, you know, whatever you see on the menu on one side, the chicken patties on one side, which I felt would make more sense to have just the same thing on each side. So one line wasn't long while the other one was just sitting there waiting for people to come in. So we kind of have the same thing on each side. We have a chicken slide, so to speak, where we have the chickens, the chicken patties pre-made so the kids can come and kind of grab and go those. And then we reopened the snack shack, which had been closed last year just due to flavor issues. So we reopened the snack shack so that kids who just wanted a snack can just go and grab that without having to wait in a long lunch line. So and then, so in the two months that it's been open, so these changes, we essentially started at the end of January. The two months it's been open, we've seen at least $100 per day increase in the à la carte income at the high school, which has really helped our bottom line. And I plan to incorporate more grab and go reimbursable meals next year. So some of the things might be, we have some little, like you might see at the grocery store, a little four-partment, classic things that might have a little bit of a protein, a little bit of the carbohydrate, some fruits and vegetables. So it's a reimbursable meal right there in one package. Something fun and easy for the kids to just take as they go. And that's just a little picture of our, I took at the beginning of the year of our food basket there. And then just recently, a month ago today, actually, we started breakfast at the middle school. So Jim and Jason and all the staff of the middle school has been really super helpful in their support of starting the breakfast program over there. So here's some pictures of some of the breakfasts we offer. So this, I didn't put the picture on the banana split because I figured I'd bring the real thing. So and then over here, we have a cookie parfaits, which is also kind of, I think it'd be kind of fun. So it's a little bit of a treat, but also still has nutrition for it. So again, we did some taste tests in March. The first day, we had six kids. And I was like, oh goodness, I don't know if this is gonna go. But we ended up, we're averaging about 25 to 30 kids per day. And the last couple of days, we had, Jim put out the survey and the teachers agreed. So we had the whole seventh grade come into the CAF for the morning because it was MCAS days. So we had about 50 kids buy on those days in addition to some of the kids brought in some breakfast so they could eat it at school. Because again, a lot of the kids, you know, they're running out the door in the morning. They don't have time to eat, they don't want to eat. And what we found is, I've had feedback from, as Joy mentioned, some teachers, parents even, that some of the kids who come in, the chiefs have reported seeing improvements in their engagement in class and their outlook in school in general. Because not only are they getting something nutritious in their bellies, but they're kind of getting that little bit of time in the morning to socialize. So then when they're going to their homeroom in first-period class, they don't feel like they have to, they're not as jittery, I guess, maybe is a good word to use. And then for the first year, so, and it also brought in some additional revenue because for each meal that we serve, that meets the meal pattern requirements, we get reimbursed from federal, well, federal and state USDA funds. And then also just the receipts. So it costs $1.25 for paid students. And students who qualify for free or used-price meals, 30 cents are free. Then again, the, you know, different reimbursements for each of those levels as well. So it brought in about an additional $511 over three weeks that we've just started at the middle school. So again, that's also going to help out for our bottom line. And there was no increase in labor costs to start this. The school nutrition staff just kind of shifted their hours a little bit to accommodate this change. So and even, it was neat because my office is right inside the middle school kitchen. So I could hear, especially on those first few days when the kids were coming through, the school nutrition staffers serving the lunch, "Oh, I'll see you at breakfast. Are you coming for breakfast? Come on now for breakfast." And I think the woman who runs it, the school nutrition manager at the middle school, she was, she was expressed that she really enjoyed seeing those kids and really like engaging with those kids in the morning. And they're just really well behaved. They just sit and talk amongst themselves. So it's really been a successful program. And again, you know, thanks to Jim and his staff for all their support. So one of the things that I did when I realized that the computers that we had that were ringing in the CAF registers were 10-plus years old. So in technology terms, it's kind of dinosaurish. So they were kind of slow. So what would happen is we'd ring a student in and the computer would get stuck. So that means it slows down the line, which means that again, that kind of slows down kids wanting to buy lunch. You don't really want to wait in line. You want to sit with your friends, make your food. So in talking with IT as well, they said that the current computers that we had, that they weren't going to be supported within a year or two anyway because of the software. So we made the decision that we purchased, so we spent $78, $75 on some new touchscreen computers. And they have definitely increased the speed and accuracy of ringing in the lunches. And two new PIN pads because each student has to put in their five-digit PIN number to access their account. So regardless of if they have prepaid monies, if they're free or reduced, we ask all students to ring in, ring in their accounts just so we can kind of make sure that we're not double-ringing in kids and that we can see that picture and we know it's, yes, that's you and you're not using your friend's account or anything like that. So again, there was some older PIN pads. I think there's, I think there's still one out there from 2005. So I mean, it's still working. But it was time for an update. And then I also merged, working again with IT, merged the Denneit and Silver Lake NutriKids databases. So what was happening was I can see all the transactions for the middle school and high school, but I literally had to ask, "Can you please print this out and scan it to me?" So I could see the reports from Denneit. So it was really helpful to be able to merge those databases. So that cost about $800, but that's a one-time fee. And that'll save about $600 a year for cost for Denneit because now we don't have to renew two licenses. We just have to renew the one that we are already paying for as an add-on license for Silver Lake. So and the other thing, the benefit for families will be, especially for the Denneit, well, mostly for the Denneit families, that it'll be seamless transition. Because for example, for Kingston, because it's two separate accounts, and what's happening with Denneit is then they'd have to end or close out their elementary accounts and then re-sign up for Silver Lake. But now at least for Denneit, it's that same seamless transaction the whole way through. And if parents want to make payments to Denneit and Silver Lake, and they have students in both schools, they can make it in one transaction. Therefore, reducing the amount of fees that they have to pay as well because the website charges a fee. We don't, we don't benefit from many of those fees. It's just a convenience fee that the website charges. So again, that's, and we're hoping that down the line, you know, that'll benefit the Denneit families as well. So I'm estimating right now that we'll end FY '19 with about $1,000 to $10,000 in profit. So I prefer to estimate a little bit low and then be pleasantly surprised rather than overestimate and be disappointed. So but again, that's keeping in mind, we spent about $10,700 in capital this year, which we, from what I can tell, the last couple of years, we really haven't spent that much in capital investment. So if we hadn't spent that, you know, that could be obviously $10,000 or $20,000 profit. So and I'm hoping to start the breakfast program here at the high school by January of next year, of January of 2020. And then also, one of the things I'd like to do is get some of our recipes entered into what's called a NutriKids menu planning program and possibly an online program so that parents and nurses can go online and check off that, you know, my student's allergic to peanuts. And then it would just have a line that anything that has peanuts in there, that's not safe for them. So it's, obviously, they still have to sign off like, I agree, this isn't a medical site. But it's still a helpful tool for parents and even carb information that nurses or parents might want to have. So one of my goals for next year. And then also, I'd like to purchase a warmer and a single-door reach-in freezer for Denneit. So that's kind of what I'm hoping for next year. Again, we'll kind of see how, like I'll be, another couple of weeks hopefully, I'll be able to see how, you know, this year ends. And that'll give me a better feeling for what I'll be able to claim for next year. So that's kind of just a little summary about what we've been up to with food services. So again, thank you so much for having me. Does there any questions or?
Any questions for Meg? Joy?
Are there any plans to work with culinary in the high school to do some food choices with the programs there?
I don't know. It's definitely not out of the question. You know, I've met Elliot and Jill, kind of seen and toured their kitchen. So it is a really nice facility. So I'd definitely be open to that if there was different opportunities for that. This is my first year in a district that has a VOCA program. So I'm not quite familiar with exactly how it all works, but it's definitely something I'd be open to because they run a great program. And I see their menus, I was like, ooh, that must be delicious.
Well? This was wonderful. Thank you so much for coming in tonight. This was very detailed. I love the changes you've made. One that jumps out at me, because I actually manned the school store a number of times and I saw how quick that lunch period goes by for the kids. So to have a grab and go, quick opportunity for them to get something is fantastic. Thank you for all of this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mike?
Thanks for putting that together, it was really good. The one takeaway I bought that I really liked from my private retail experience was the watching the inventories and transferring to the different areas, which is huge. You're not wasting product and order.
Megan, could you go back to one of the slides that had some of the trays down at the bottom?
Sure.
So I've had the pleasure of knowing Megan for close to 20 years. We have a friend in common. And I know her educational background and her experience. There's not a single thing that she just talked about that I can ask any questions about because I know she's far superior in this category to me. You've made food delicious and nutritious and improved the bottom line. Couldn't ask for more from what you've done. I would like to support continuing improvement. And one of the items that concerns me has nothing to do with you or your program, but it's the polyestagridol that we use for trays at this school and at the middle school. Denneit, four years ago, made the commitment to move to compostable trays. This is more a challenge for us to consider next year moving forward in our budget. I don't want to ask Megan to have to take this on with some of the capital investments that she's making. But we're talking about how important renewable energy is. I know Kingston is committed to recycling programs and has state funds for some of their programs in the town. I'd love for the committee to be able to support our budget next year breaking those trays, which will cost a few cents more per tray to the discussion when we're approaching budget next year. I think it would send a great message to our students. It would send a great message of stewardship on our part to our communities. And, you know, I don't want to put it on the back of your program that you're doing such great things where you obviously have plans moving forward. But I'd like to be able to support that in the future at all of our schools with the union help with Silver Lake.
We do have, this is, this is essentially my lunch because it won't fit in the microwave because I heat after the kids. So like, probably starving in the microwave isn't that great anyway. But most of the middle school and the high school, we do use reusable trays. So we use the dishwashers there too because I agree, I think it's important also to protect our environment. And I think it would be great too if we could get some recycle bins so you could put some other boxes and cans and things like that.
Even like you just said, I mean, you brought up some things I didn't know. Maybe in the fall, I could reach out to you and we could talk about what you would wish as being a more sustainable, eco-friendly process. We can use your expertise and then we can run with it from there.
Yeah, that would be great, absolutely.
Great. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
I just want to say too, she's been enjoyable to work with all year. You know, she's, she is incredibly detailed and reads everything so carefully. And she has really just made all critically positive changes. So it's been a treasure for us. Be waiting there.
Thank you.
They're not coming. How did you get the recognition recognition? Joy is waiting.
I can do it under my section if that's all right, sure.
This is a little disjointed at this point, but if you could take a look at our minutes from our February 14 meeting, we'll entertain a motion to accept.
Motion to accept, February 14 minutes.
Do I have a second? Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much, everyone. Chris LaGio, we're in your house. You may begin your presentation.
Thank you. Hello, good evening. All right, I will start with the student recognition. Unfortunately, they weren't able to be here tonight. But we have Chris Tilton, Laura's son, who is being recognized by the Massachusetts State Track Coaches Association. Chris was nominated by Coach Moore from the middle school. He's our track coach for the prestigious Frank Kelly Adversity Award the prestigious Frank Kelly Adversity Award and has been selected to receive this at the annual MSTCA Awards banquet on June 9th. The story that Coach Moore shared is that in December of 2016, Chris was competing at the RLC in the MSTCA Sprint Classic. In the middle of this 300 meter event, he collapsed mid-stride. Um, as he rounded the curve towards the finish line, officials and trainers were called in, he was rushed to the hospital and he, um, underwent a pretty long, um, recovery time. After his recovery process, he was able to return to the cross-country and winter track season and almost three years later, Chris competed in the Division III Indoor Championships, placing sixth overall in the 600 meter, um, event. So congratulations to him and he never gave up and he continued to push hard and as a former track athlete, I'm very proud of him. Um, our second recognition tonight is Sophia Ritchie, a junior at our high school. For the past 24 years, South Shore Community Action Council has recognized individuals and organizations that demonstrate extraordinary commitment to fighting poverty and exemplify the spirit of community on the South Shore. Sophia Ritchie was nominated and chosen as one of their local heroes this year, as someone who has gone above and beyond to help their neighbors in need in our community. Sophia joins their mission and helps every month to support their ongoing efforts to make life a little brighter for children, seniors, families and individuals in our town who need the help the most. Joy and I were invited, um, to the awards banquet, unfortunately neither one of us could attend, um, but we're really proud of both Sophia and Chris for their accomplishments. I have an out of state field trip request on behalf of Nurse Marini for our allied health class. She would like to take them to the Connecticut Science Center next month for the Real Bodies Exhibition. I don't know if any of you are familiar with it, but it's real bodies on display, um, so they can study the muscular and skeletal system, um, examine body systems and human anatomy and physiology in an in-depth and internal way to increase their understanding of body mechanisms.
Obviously, this is the first time we've authorized this field trip because this is the first.
Correct. Yes. And it's a traveling exhibit, so it's not always nearby to us.
Would anybody like to make the motion to allow our students to go to Connecticut to see the real lives exhibit? So, and move, second. Second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Don't break the page.
Not the page apart. All right, thank you. Um, one of the handouts, um, included in this evening is the school improvement plan for 2019, 2020 and 2020, 21. Um, I don't know if many of you had a chance to read through yet, but some of the, um, highlights of, of things that have been in it in the past that are new in the next two years is rolling out our vision of the graduate, which we shared, I think it was the last meeting that we had it up here, maybe the meeting before, the Respect the Lake.
We had it as part of the assessment.
Yep.
February.
Um, creating a written curriculum in a consistent format for all courses in all departments, examining our current schedule to increase opportunities for interdepartmental time as well as student academic support time, installing red dot rapid emergency alert system at our kiosk in main offices, and exploring creating a program within the school to address the opioid and drug epidemic and vaping. Uh, and then constantly continuing to review student electronic device use policy, um, and exploring how we can support our students in the digital citizenship age with social media.
Are you bringing this before I submit to approve?
Yes, unless we need another month or time to read and then we can do it at the next meeting.
Anybody have any hesitation of approving this tonight? I've served on the school improvement councils before, which helped in creating the school improvement plan. It's a lot of work and a lot of people don't realize that we have other committees that help our schools function. Uh, and if you could please just convey our thanks to those volunteers who are part of the school improvement council, the teachers, uh, the member at large and the parents, which appreciate the teachers as well, everybody who does that. Can I have a motion to approve the Silver Lake Regional High School School Improvement Plan for the 2019, 2020 and 2020, 2021 school years? So move like Chris, second by a pen. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right. Unanimous? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our school council also has two handbook changes for your consideration tonight. Um, the first is on social media. Um, it's really just to kind of outline, um, and remind students, um, to use social media appropriately, um, and to define in our handbook that there will be consequences if you are not choosing to use social media, um, appropriately. Specifically, um, if students are posting, commenting, recording or sharing photos or videos of other students or staff members that are deemed inappropriate or are posted without their permission. Again, it's just an ongoing effort to continue to model appropriate use, keep up with 20% changes, but also support our students who feel targeted on social media.
Just a question on that. Has this been reviewed by Fred for the ability?
So we usually give him like our, we would give it to him after this, after we make any edits or revisions and then he would take a look at our whole handbook for us.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, entertaining a motion to, uh, accept the high school's handbook changes for the 2019.
Do you want me to talk about the second one first?
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Nope, that's my, that's my fault. Um, the other one is more, it's, it's a current practice right now, but we'd like to formalize it, the school council would like to formalize it in our handbook and that is for lunch deliveries during the school day for students who forget their lunch. Um, over the years, there's been influx of iced coffee and Dunkin' Donuts and Starbucks deliveries, which we all need our coffee breaks sometimes, but unfortunately it has caused, it does cause quite a disruption to the learning environment. Um, students get text messages and get called out of class. Um, so we've really, we've changed our practice, but we'd like to formalize that within our handbook. So obviously if a student forgets their lunch, we will get their food to them. Um, but if it's not part of a traditional lunch, we would like to refrain from that happening.
So who's bringing the, who's bringing in the coffee here?
Students.
Other students?
Yes.
Okay. I, I have in the past delivered a nice coffee to my daughter who's still here.
It's all your fault.
I have to read this somewhat.
And I will say, we've done it, our, our, our main office and our front kiosk staff have done a great job and we've communicated to our students. They, they know what the expectation is now, but we would like to have it in a handbook formally.
You should see a change in attitude when that student gets that coffee. They, they go from being hopefully attentive to thinking they're on spring break. It's a total attitude shift.
Except I think it's mostly sugar. There's not so much coffee in it.
It's great. It's a product, I don't, I don't think it meets the nutritional requirement.
Maybe Ms. Aaronols can open up a restaurant next year.
Does this mean that you will not allow truck pickup deliveries?
We do not.
I'm making a motion to approve the, uh, high school handbook changes for 2019, 2020, 2021.
I have seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right. Fully support your changes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Gil. We appreciate it. Any further questions from Ms. Gil? All right, we move on to Jim and his update with things going on at the middle school.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so one of the things that I want to talk about was, uh, our New York City trip. So on, uh, March 30th and 31st, uh, we took over 140 students to New York City. Uh, in New York City, we walked around Liberty Island, took pictures of the Statue of Liberty, uh, did a tour of Ellis Island. We also walked down to, uh, the, um, top of the hub, uh, top of the rock, excuse me. And on the top of the rock, uh, they got to take the pictures and see the New York City skyline at night. We had students that visited Broadway, took in a Broadway show. They also got to work and talk with actual actors that are on Broadway performing and then they got a tour of the stage the next day of the very stage they were at, watching the Broadway show. So all the magic happens on the stage and the next day they get to see what's behind the curtain and how all that magic happened. So, um, it was really a great event. I received multiple letters from parents thanking the school, thanking school committee just for their support and, uh, I just want to come back and say thank you guys for your support. It really was a wonderful event and I want to thank the superintendent for her support because when the kids come back and they do something 140 strong, they come back with ties, not only to the teachers that are on the event, between each other. I still have students that come running up to me when they see me in the hallway that were on the New York trip and they can't just come up, wait to come over just to say hi because they were with me for that weekend. So, um, I want to thank you guys again for that. It's really important and I had kids telling me that was the best trip of their life so far. Now, obviously their life's very young and they have probably, some of them haven't been in a lot of trips, some of them, and they came and told me that on the trip, this is their first trip away from home, uh, but they still came with those sentiments, with those thoughts. So, um, I thank you for that. I would also ask for your support to have the New York trip run again next year in the exact same format where all students across all three teams in the eighth grade have the opportunity to go if they would like to go. And of course, we financially support the students and the families that need it, which we did this year. Um, and the one thing they were looking at switching was to do it in the fall because they really thought a lot of those bonds that are built on that trip could come back to the school and be more a part of our climate and culture, which I'm supportive of. So I ask for.
I'll make a motion to have this be an ongoing field trip. Second. All those in favor of authorizing the trip to commence again in the fall to go to New York City for that awesome field trip of their lives? All those in favor? Yeah, unanimous? And Jim, um, the way you just presented that, the pictures that you include, um, you know, of the kids actually on the trip, and just your words, it means a lot to us to know the effect that we were able to, to help you give to the students. So thank you for bringing that up again.
Thank you. And I'll say, one of the pictures, um, we, obviously we went to the 9/11 memorial and I'll, I'll just quickly say that, um, you know, 140 students at the 9/11 memorial, there's a lot of energy because they're with their friends and they're excited and they're walking. But I want to say how respectful our students were and how somber the moment became as they walked around that 9/11 memorial. And I really give our communities and our students a lot of credit for the way that they dealt with that moment in time when we were in New York. So, uh, really very well done and they all deserve recognition for that. I will move on to, um, I was going to talk a little bit about, um, the MCAS breakfast. I know that that was kind of already done. She did such a wonderful job. I do want to, um, say thank you to Megan for doing all that work to bring breakfast to the middle school. I also want to thank the superintendent for really putting some hard work in with Megan to make that happen for our school. And, um, you know, and I know Megan gave a lot of accolades for us, but we just wanted to make sure it happened. We shifted personnel around, supervision around to make sure that we facilitated that in a very positive way for our kids and, um, so we were able to do those things and, and we're very excited about it. We saw a lot of smiling kids in the morning before MCAS and, uh, you know, I mean, a lot of the kids that really need that time to have breakfast now are doing that and that's so important. And our, our teachers from our classrooms, which, um, the superintendent had referenced earlier, have sent me emails too, saying how wonderful that is because their kids in their classrooms, which they know needed that time and needed that morning breakfast, which they're not getting at home and now we've made that happen and that's really a moment for them. So I want to thank everybody's, um, hard work to make that happen and we are continuing and it continues as Megan talked about, growing and it's just a positive piece of the school. So I want to thank everybody for that. Another thing that we have is the Community Builders Club is doing the penny wars. Uh, what they do is for this fundraiser, uh, kids put in pennies at the lunchtime and the money our students raise is combined with other schools and, um, through that money, it helps with meals and tuitions and it funds one year of education for 22 Kenyan children who have been identified as vulnerable children, vulnerable to be in child labor and other forms of abuse to their impoverished situations and their status as orphans in Kenya. So I just want to, um, put a thank you to, um, Bep Blumer. She's our ELA teacher in the eighth grade. She works with their kids on these events to help 22 students to get an opportunity. So I thank everybody and our kids for that as well. Master schedule, I just want to talk about master schedule in the sense that, uh, we are well underway with our master schedule. Uh, I'll be working with, uh, Dave Murphy, who's our tech person over April break and we will hopefully at the end of April break have our first load of our master schedule. And with that, we will be on time to have students on teams for our step update, which is a very important part of the transition process. And we will have student schedules for them at the end of the year as we've done in the past, I think four years now, Joy, I think we've been doing that. We made that transition. So, um, we're very excited about that. It really does help with the transition. So the other thing is the student handbook. I know I passed it out, uh, last time. I don't know if there are any questions for me. So I just asked for a vote on the changes on the student handbook.
Would you like to make a motion? So, okay, so would you like to make a motion to approve the changes to the middle school?
Yes.
Anybody want a second? All right, great. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right.
Thank you. So I'll just finish with MCAS ELA quickly. We had our.
So thank you to our school improvement council.
Yes.
Just if you have a chance.
I will.
For us to offer a video.
I'll let them know. Thank you. Um, and they do a lot of positive work and I, the school council really has done an excellent job. And we've just recently done our surveys and, and we look at that feedback too. So that will be coming next time in our school improvement plan. So I will let them know. So MCAS ELA, so we had our ELA MCAS on Tuesday, Wednesday this week. Kids worked very diligently, um, on that. Uh, they worked well into over the two hour pace and, you know, when we talk about kids that are 14 years old, some of them 13 years old, they're also, we're really asking them a lot, uh, but they really step up to the plate and they do a lot for us. So, uh, I want to thank them for their hard work. I want to thank our teachers for preparing our students and that both days were very smooth and went very well. And that is our seventh grade ELA that is now completed, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday. And our eighth grade ELA starts the week after, the week after we get back. So it's not the week we get back from April break, it's the week after that. And then we move into math and science. So, uh, that's the MCAS update and then that's it for me. Thank you.
Any questions for Jim? All right, thank you very much. On to our school district business, Christine.
Thank you. Once again, in your package tonight, you have a copy of the financial. We have just crossed the three-quarter mark in the year and it's been a pretty eventful year with our budget. For the most part, we'll be able to withstand all those little things that have happened along the way. Throughout the budget, you'll see as areas of smaller deficits, they will be absorbed within their category, so those items should be fine. The areas that there is some concern are homeless transportation and maintenance. You can see homeless transportation on page three of the detail. Right now, we have a deficit of $48,000 at the high school and that's the activity through the month of March that will continue to the end of the year. Keep in mind that we will receive a reimbursement for that. I submitted information for the end of year report, so that happens next, the end of next summer, to fall. So we will receive some reimbursement when it comes to the end of the following year. So it will happen, it just goes back to E and D eventually because it's miscellaneous income for us. But I just wanted to remind everybody that that does happen and it is still included in the 2020 state budget. So we're optimistic. The other areas, the maintenance on page four of the detail, see there was some significant deficits there, especially in, um, maintenance of buildings, which is the most significant account for anything that can go wrong on our building. And right now at the high school, you have a deficit of $85,000 there. The biggest item there is part of the replacement of the hot water tanks. I just wanted to let you know that we do keep, we're always looking at all these accounts and we're keeping all the summaries, we look at the big picture, making sure that we're counting everything that we have to take care of to get through to the end of the year. So we'll be fine with that, but it's just there may be some juggling that has to happen to make all of that work. And I think that was it for right now. Unless there are any questions?
Any questions for Christine?
I have more stuff though, if you're done with the financial. Um, on the, on the agenda for tonight, there's a note about OPEP presentation. I'm wondering if people would like to see another OPEP presentation? Would that be of interest?
So we did include in our, uh, continuing to talk to you, you should turn over that.
Correct. We have made four payments totaling $100,000 so far.
So, uh, does anybody feel that they need to have another presentation on them at this point?
We'll just ask for, um, like maybe a one page agenda or what the cost updates are for that normal cost.
Sure. Yeah. Just an update of where we are. Okay. And then one more item.
Absolutely.
On the agenda, we have some information about the solar bids. So keep in mind, um, some time ago, I was given the opportunity to move forward with pursuing solar projects and what was out there. My goal was to find out what, what opportunities existed for Silver Lake Regional School District. What was the best option for us? So we engaged with a company called Robert Patterson Associates that has worked with Plymouth and they've had great success with a variety of projects they've done. The cut, the choices were narrowed down to three, um, solar on our roofs, which probably is an awesome idea right now for us. The next option is the.
Plug leaks?
So I'm going to skip over that one. Uh, the solar parking lot canopies and we know there was a, there'd be a lot of disruption involved making that happen and the expected revenue could be up $20,000 a year. So that was not maybe our best option for right now. The third option was pursuing additional net meter agreements, which we have done. Uh, we did go, uh, requests and proposals were issued and they were due back at the end of March and we received three very qualified responses. It's amazing how the agreement is so different now versus what we started years ago with Silver Lake with that original net meter agreement. So what we're doing right now is the, the, um, the proposals are being vetted and we're reviewing the proposals to see which would be the best opportunity for Silver Lake and to what extent we can take advantage of those opportunities because there are caps based on our previous participation. So we're still reviewing to see what the best choices for Silver Lake and I will keep you updated on that. So we'll see what happens. I just wanted to give you an update.
Questions for Christine?
Thank you.
Hi. Lieutenant. Joe?
The state opened its online restraint data collection tool at the end of February. The purpose of this is to really make sure that, uh, the schools are compliant and ensuring that every student is free from the use of physical restraint that is inconsistent with the regulations. And so, um, physical restraint is used only in emergency situations of the last resort. School personnel, um, is trained annually regarding the regulations and then we have a small, smaller group of teachers who annually renew their, their restraint certifications in the event of, uh, necessary. But again, at last resort, um, only to prevent, um, the student harming himself or another person. Um, the Title II A grant FY19 was amended to reflect additional funding. You may recall last year, we discussed how at a certain point, the state reflects upon what was planned and what wasn't and then reallocates. And so ours went up for a grand, uh, total of $589 was the increase. So our total is $77,699.[1753.52] And our Title II A grant, as you know, grows to pay for a number of professional development opportunities across the district, it also pays for our mentor stipends, so we have a mentorship program and those stipends are taken out of our Title II A funds. Let's see, Silver Lake was awarded a $600 grant to promote healthy eating habits and a wellness workplace culture. It's not very often that a grant can be used to purchase food, but in this case it was and was actually encouraged, so we used that money to buy healthy lunches from Elevate Fitness in Kingston for our professional development training and understanding by design at the high school that was made up of a number of faculty representatives and we provided them with lunch for the three days and it was well received and certainly appreciated by the staff and certainly we'd like to extend our staff to our thanks for the grant and to Elevate for working with us with a very limited amount of money to provide an extremely healthy lunch that otherwise would have not been possible. I wanted to thank Laura Tilton, you may recall that she had introduced a Google tool at one of our meetings and was really enthusiastic about it and so we had a number of coordinators who were interested in learning more about it and she came and met with us and went over some of the features of this tool and it certainly was helpful for us in terms of thinking about ways that it could be used and looking at our data and particularly with MCAS and making that more user friendly. Some of the tools that we can access online are very cumbersome and difficult to work with and when you talk about this many different data pieces of information to pull together, it can be very time consuming just to open them up, let alone manipulate them in any fashion for presentations with staff and otherwise. Finally, the curriculum coordinators continued their social emotional learning in the classroom book study and our last meeting was about ways to encourage engagement and the difference between student engagement and student compliance and recognizing different ways that we can encourage student engagement in the classroom to lead to better understandings, more positive relationships in the classroom and overall better academic success for our students as well. The team has recommended that we continue to look at three new social emotional learning competencies next year and so that will be hopefully part of our plan moving forward with our professional development schedule. Board, 1920, coming soon.
Questions for Jill?
So I'd just like to thank Laura for unveiling herself to Jill and her team, you know, sometimes we forget to realize that job-alike professional groups for upper administration is hard to come by. Teachers sometimes work on teams, sometimes they have colleagues that teach the same subject or the same grade level and they can lean on each other for support, but very often our principals and our assistants, superintendents, superintendents, they're all by themselves in the district and it's really a unique opportunity to get together in that job-alike group and share advice and strategies, so that's great.
We were very grateful for the time she spent with us, it was helpful.
Great, on to our superintendent.
So Megan was kind enough to do her presentation and especially applying for instance the NAMM splits, I thought we'd heard that from our dinner. You have before you the draft group calendar, it looks like this in your packet, I just wanted to go through it briefly, we won't be voting on this yet because we have not the time to be to look at it and we won't be finalizing this till after the town's vote of new members because we have all the names across the top, just so you know. So first day of school, which is always the most important question if you ask parents, is August 28th, how many students will be back to school? We have the first week of school, which is the way we've always done it here, is three days, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, the second week of school is a four-day week because of Labor Day and then the third week is a five-day week, so it's really a very nice progression, I think, for the teachers and students alike, it's kind of hard to get yourself back in. We have a gap day on September 23rd, traditionally we had had October 15th the day after Columbus Day for a four-day weekend and that had been previously our full day professional development day. Both the town of Kingston and the town of Halifax requested that we change our professional development day to the voting day November 5th. Last year, although it was not a huge election because of the three votes, one of which on the nursing and I can't even remember what the other two were now, but there was a huge turnout which is very unexpected. For those of you who don't know, Halifax Elementary School is a polling place and Kingston Elementary School is a polling place. It became extremely congested in a very unsafe situation and the police in both towns along with this selectmen and town administrators requested that we close the schools on voting days. This November 5th is not any major election, however, I think it would not be a bad precedent to sort of get in the habit of holding November 5th also, and I don't know the legality of this, but if they have things they need to vote, I believe they would still hold it on that. I don't know that, but that just intellectually makes sense to me, I might be wrong, but if they were going to hold votes, I would assume they would do it on that day because that is the day to do it. November 11th, of course, is Veterans Day, it actually falls on a Monday, so November's going to be a very odd month for families, so the 5th we will have off, the 11th we would have off and then of course we have Thanksgiving at the end. So November's kind of an odd month, but I'm not sure there's anything that is going to change that at this point. Here's the next question. We have Christmas next year and Christmas falls on Wednesday. I am not personally a Grinch type of girl and so I would prefer not to hold the school on December 23rd, I don't really know of any school districts that are, so we're going to, unless you have an objection, close for the full week of the 23rd through the 27th and then the following week through the 1st. I understand that there is a district or two who is also closing the 2nd and the 3rd. I personally do not feel that is a good plan because if we get a lot of snow days, you'll be here until July 1st, so I think a really nice break like that is a pretty generous break, but you know, obviously I don't get a vote in the calendar, this is just sort of my personal feelings on it. Monday is Martin Luther King Day, the 20th, and then in February we have school vacation week, which has always been our traditional week. This year we tried having the PD day on that Monday after vacation week. I've never had a schedule be perfect for everyone, but I think overall it was a pretty successful day. Parents particularly, I know they like that, I think there's really expensive fees, it's a little cheaper to not fly during the weekend, so for parents who are going away, it was a little bit easier for transportation and that seemed to work pretty well. We have a couple early release days in March and again April we have our vacation week. This year during April vacation week, we had two holidays that fell on it, Easter Day and Good Friday, so it was actually only a three-day vacation week for those of us who work year-round. Next year, Good Friday falls April 10th. We have Memorial Day, high school graduation will be May 30th next year and then assuming everything works the way it's supposed to, it will be done on June 12th. So we'll see how that works.
So a single snow day bobs you?
A single snow day will bop us into the next week.
Any comments on the votes calendar at this point? I would say I wholeheartedly support the fact that you're giving a full week of the 23rd through the 27th. I understand your justification for having the 2nd and the 3rd, but if anybody felt strongly about those days going away, I wouldn't stand in the way.
Again, we have time to think, we're not going to take a vote now, you can absolutely think about it, you know, there's, any decision we make, there's going to matter, I can't predict the weather, I can't control the weather, actually I've learned I can't control anything, you know, we can all dream, but the 2nd and the 3rd, you know, again, I know there are a few districts that are doing it, I don't think it's a huge number of districts. Again, my main concern would just be if we had a bad winter, it could really get difficult going forward, so, and that's just really an unknown. This year we were really lucky and I know.
That would be 12 snow days, just snowpocalypse. We have a different commissioner this time, last time we had the snowpocalypse, Commissioner Chester, he was having none of the good things, making the kids go to school on Saturdays, extra hours, that's the next thing, there was no emergency declaration for any school in the state. So again, like I said, I wouldn't stand in the way if someone wanted to get rid of the 1st and 2nd as well, but.
Can we ask our principals their input?
They can do it on a very different reason.
Well, we're here 12 months, so it doesn't make a difference to me. I mean, I'm all for extra days, I think for people with family, that's a much needed break that time of year, but I don't want to speak on, I mean, I haven't solicited that information or surveyed my staff on their sentiments about it because you know they're the ones in June who are, you know, counting down the days sometimes towards the end.
It only happens every six years or so.
Yeah, it's not.
I just remember as a child, waiting for that year to happen. I mean, that's one of my most vivid memories from my educational experience here as well, was waiting for those years.
We're lined up perfectly.
The only question I was thinking about is if we could ask the staff what are their thoughts on that because they brought up the issue of working during the hot days before, so would.
We could do a survey.
And the other thing I just do want to point out, it's not just the school calendars for all four districts, so you know, and not that they wouldn't, but the only schools that are air-conditioned out of six is Kingston Elementary School and Denneb Elementary School, so everyone else, you know, as we push that calendar forward, you know, we, for anybody who remembers, we had the data that showed classrooms over 100 degrees.
Right, that's why I was asking the question to see if the staff.
It's that balancing act, yeah, as I said, I've learned long and well that you can't make everyone happy.
Let's at least put the time into getting some more information. If you guys were not doing that for.
We can coordinate that. We can, if it's all right, Joy, we can share, we can touch base with the other principals and share that.
Well, we'll do, yes. I'm not sure anyone's committed to this, I'm interested, I hate to commit that.
We'll start with us, all right, sorry, I'm like getting at myself.
Teachers and everyone, I can ask Halifax. It's great, thank you for putting the time. We know how much. We know how much time goes into trying to make this jigsaw puzzle for us and thank you for putting time and the explanation, especially for those of us who aren't from the two schools who have already. I totally understand that we need to look at it, so thank you for that explanation as well.
All right, and.
So you also have the school committee meeting schedule, so last year we tried a new meeting
schedule where we meet every month in the, during the budget season, but I mean it's not budget season, which is seems like it's getting fewer and farther between, we are meeting on a six-week basis. I believe that we have been able to share the information in a timely manner that the committees need and school committees have been wonderful about stopping and deciding warrants, which is something that we are sort of locked into. I think probably for those of us who've been here a long time, Christine and I for instance, we are really, we struggled at times, we had a meeting but we didn't, which was a lovely thing to discover by the way, but we're just creatures of habit. So I personally did not have any problem with the change, I thought it worked well, I mean it was a little less burdensome for the administrators, all of the administrators and I found it very helpful and hopefully you did also and I know that I believe all of us are really appreciative of trying to meet at six o'clock, not getting out at 10 or 11 is a lot easier for all of us when we start the dates early. So this schedule is based on the exact same format of last year, if you were to look at your calendar this year and look at next year's calendar setup, it is basically the exact same format. The good news though is that we will not be meeting in Valentine's Day, so your spouses will be very happy, significant others will be very happy about that.
So Mike, I know you had a large part in changing the format of our event, how did you feel it worked for us this year?
I thought it worked very well, you know, like Joyce said during the budget time we had, you know, other meetings scheduled. Like we always say, you can always call another meeting if we have to get to do something, so I think it's important for the administration to be able to not have to come to a million meetings, you know, I just think when they're at so many meetings, the focus gets away from what we really would like to be doing with the buildings, you know, we really focus on what they need for us in the district, so I don't know if any of the members have any comments about whether we're scheduling or not or if they're.
The only thing that I thought maybe that we could do is when we're going to have the policy meetings, when we're going to have the readings, maybe we could do that in a union 31 meeting or have combined meetings so that the administrators just cover that topic once. It was just a thought to try to reduce the.
I'd actually have to read the policy manual, I believe it has to be voted by each committee is in the policy manual, first and second reading each one, but thank you.
Yeah, we had also talked about potentially having some of the presentations that get done at every single school committee, be done at joint meetings instead, so maybe we want to, here we go with it, and maybe focus some of those efforts again at a single meeting where we can all ask our questions, you know, gain insight from each other's committees as well, so maybe we want to move towards that when we look at, you know, Marie's presentation and the technology presentation. So the MCAS data, I don't know, since some of the information is so individualized at every school, the person who meets in grade levels, I don't know if you'd want to go there. Obviously throw things at the wall and see what sticks. We can track for maybe one or two next year and just see how they work out and then we can reassess from that point. Any ideas or questions about the proposed meetings?
The only thing I would say is the July one, I'm not sure if we're hitting the vacation week for any members here, you know, 4th of July falls on a Saturday, so either before or after we may have a few people vacationing, myself being one.
So this is a very lengthy conversation with Christine and I.
The struggle for us is that all of the towns have to close out by July 15th, so we have to have all of our meetings and unfortunately it's the same staff doing all these closeouts so we can't get them all done in such a short window of time, so we've tried to make the schedule work as best we can, Joy, I did sit down and talk about this.
And we were still talking by the end, but it was close.
Especially with July 4th, and I'm sure people would want July 3rd, I think that's an awesome idea. We made the calendar work as best we could. Open to opportunities.
Can you tell this gets a little tense?
So I'm noting the latest date is the 13th, so that means you would have had to do all of that work for all of the other towns by the 13th.
Yes.
But in reality, how long do the meetings take?
I would think those closeout meetings are very brief.
So if you've already had to do all the work by the 13th anyways, how much of an extra burden would it be on you to potentially double up on that date for presentation? Just so we can do the votes in, but you've already done the work.
Each one is different, so which one would.
So Christine is very sequential in her process.
I know she is.
Christine and I work really well together, she knows I love her dearly, but Christine is very concrete, sequential, you do not get her out of order, she cannot, I'm not sure she can move on to the next one until that one is.
The struggle is for us, they provided some breathing, like Silver Lake is very intense compared to the other closeouts, so it's Halifax and stuff, Kingston and stuff, so it's. You don't really take the same amount of energy, so there's something to be said for that, so if we knew that, if we could have all four meetings, which are like the 12th and the 13th, I think we could probably.
Joy's going to go to those meetings.
To Chris's point though, I'm just thinking in terms of getting a quorum to the LBIT, it potentially might work in your favor.
I would say July 4th probably works, that would be awesome.
So it's just something to think about, I think you have a valid point, I mean we could always just combine the Silver Lake and the Plymouth. If we can't get everybody together for Silver Lake, we could have the contingency that we need here, the Plymouth would just join us or we could go to Denneb with its air conditioning and do it again.
The library has AC.
So, I mean, we do, we have that ability too, we have to post.
For me, the biggest piece of it is getting the warrants signed.
I hear you. I hear you.
So, other than that, the rest we could...
You're being very confident. Joy doesn't believe that I'm...
You haven't been in our office.
All right, so let's take it under advisement.
It's a very interesting concept.
I think Chris does a great point.
I think he's a great point, Chris.
I think someone else is going to be absent other than me those weeks. I'm always aware of the fourth.
I like it.
I know.
Great idea. Does he get on the press?
If we could get warrants signed, I would be open to a different presentation.
Now, we're going to be voting this at our Kingston meeting on the 20th before our next meeting of this group. And there was no, we didn't have this discussion on Monday. It was just like, okay, we didn't.
Or about the calendar?
Calendar, we didn't have any discussion about the calendar or the meeting schedule. We'll be voting in our next meeting. I mean, I'm here, I can bring this information back to my place.
And we could vote it, we could vote it in July for the following year.
Okay.
I don't think there's any law.
Stick up all this chat.
What, what are we doing for this July now that we're on that subject?
The calendar needs to be voted, which we can say don't, doesn't need to be voted.
Well, the calendar, we need to vote after the election. So traditionally, we voted in June, but the layout may turn out to be July. But we can get it up. The parents are what are concerned about. They don't really know the personal, but they don't care about the school committee names.
Yeah, right. They don't even care for the draft.
They, yeah, no, they just want to know the dates for vacations and start dates and stuff. We can get that up as soon as everybody sees it.
Just have to wait for Plimpton's meeting on the 22nd. Everyone's got it in hand. I can put it up on the website.
So we want to hold, and I'm sorry to talk about Kingston stuff, but this does affect us because if we vote... Well, I guess we could vote our meeting schedule. That doesn't affect, Kingston could vote that meeting schedule. Doesn't affect this. It's just the calendar. Yeah, the calendar, we want all four districts to be on the same day.
And if you guys can't get quorum on this, you can always join us at Denneb. Christine says it's okay.
I will, actually, in 2020, I should be, this, July, I'll be gone on 13th.
Gordon, you asked about this year?
Yeah.
Halifax is July 2nd, Kingston is July 8th, Silver Lake July 11th, and Plimpton July 15th.
For this year?
For this, yeah.
July. I've got to wait both decks of shit, too.
I am open to alternatives.
We might have to come up with a different... All right, I think we have covered that well.
Okay.
So one more question on the calendar. If we could give Kingston feedback about Silver Lake, at least from the administration and the, and the staff about the calendar, I think that would be useful so that they at least have that.
I think what we could, I don't think we need the Kingston School Committee to vote to ask you to do, to...
Survey?
Survey. I think you can do that on your own.
Yeah, no, I can do that. I mean, you can choose to do a job of the information. Again, I think all of us are aware. We don't hear the votes. We're just getting ideas.
Yeah.
And you won't be here.
I want you to hear that a lot, I know.
All right. Are we done with that talk? Budget discussion.
I would love to, I already crossed it out.
We're going to consider that a done point.
Yeah, go ahead and talk about the part-time school resource officer. About 40 documents I brought, but I think this gets addressed.
So I think everyone is aware that we put a warrant on the Halifax Town Meeting and on the Plimpton Town Meeting to fund a part-time school resource officer to be housed at the middle school. Kingston had funded out of their town budget, not out of our school budget, a part-time school resource officer for four years. This current year, they are completely funding a full-time school resource officer, which is housed at the high school. If there is a need, the resource officer goes over to the middle school, but it is basically full-time at the high school. We would like to also have the resource officer at the middle school, at least part-time. We had a meeting where we met, we answered questions. Overall, I believe all the towns, although Plimpton wasn't present, actually. But Halifax and Kingston were both supportive of the concept of there being a part-time school resource officer. The problem was, sort of the devil in the details, was how is it being funded? So Halifax very much wanted us to add the resource officer into our budget and have it funded through the budget, but that would mean we would have to cut the budget. They weren't interested in us increasing the budget. They were interested in adding a resource officer without increasing our budget. That wasn't going to work so well for a variety of reasons. Again, if we were to add a .5 resource officer into our budget, that full-time officer's been completely funded by Kingston, that .5 would then force Kingston to pay a portion of that position also. Right, over half of that, which would be totally unreasonable. Halifax's response was also add the full-time police officer to the budget. So now we add along .5 positions into our budget, which would mean probably cutting Jewish teachers. Not at all what we were after in this process. So I think we sort of left the meeting with the idea that people understood it would be important to have a resource officer, but no agreement on how to fund the position. I received a couple of emails from Denneb. I don't know the final outcome. They asked some questions about why isn't it in the budget? Well, what does a resource officer does? How do you contribute the cost? I don't have a sense of how they feel, but at this point, there's a warrant article on for Halifax, a warrant article on for Denneb. I did want to just mention, I reached out to Old Rochester and I had a couple of conversations with their superintendent. This actually came from Old Rochester, by the way. This format, this is what they use. This is where this idea came from. One of our staff members in Denneb is the chair of one of their committees, and she was kind enough to share it with me. I looked really tired that day. But anyway, Old Rochester, what they do is the police have an intermunicipal agreement where it is housed within the police budgets. So they have a full-time officer at their sort of junior, senior high there, and it's funded portionally from the towns, and it just goes directly into their police budgets. That makes sense to me, which is sort of what I would ultimately like to have happen. It is very complicated on many levels for funding for a school resource officer. We are not year-round. We have school vacation weeks. You know, during those times, it is difficult to figure out a fair way of exactly what the cost is. Where, when Officer Allen is not here, he can be on duty in the town of Kingston, supporting those resources. I do believe in the course of the meetings, there came to be an understanding of why it has to be a Kingston police officer. I'm not sure there was agreement, but I believe there was understanding. And we had a great turnout. Thank you for everyone who was able to come to the meetings. I believe we were able to answer the questions, and I really appreciate the town of Kingston, the police chief, and Officer Allen really did, I think, a particularly great job of expressing what the need is. I don't believe the towns are not supportive. I do believe they want the schools to be safe. I do not believe that's the issue. I think they just can't figure out a comfortable way to fund it. And that's, that's sort of our struggle at this point. I plan on, you know, living at the town meetings for how long they take to get through them. Some of them are really wrong. Some of them not as much. We'll see how it goes. And, but if you'd want to let me know, I don't know what the outcome will be, but I do plan to fight this with fight, and I appreciate anybody else who would stand up with me.
You said that very well. You know, I'd like to thank the town of Kingston for fully funding the school resource officer for our high school and being the leader and stepping up to the plate and providing safety and security for our students here at the campus. You know, I understand the perspective of the finance committee from Halifax wanting it in the budget. I just don't, I don't agree with them. I understand the position of the selectmen from Halifax, and I just don't agree with them. That's going to happen. From time to time, we're going to have legitimate disagreements over how things are done. But at the end of the day, they get one vote at a town meeting, and so do I. So this really comes down to the people of Halifax and the people of Plimpton going to their town meeting and voting in favor of this article to fund a part-time school resource officer at our middle school. Everybody's vote counts. It's important for you to be there. It's important for you to stay for the entire meeting. There's many, many articles to be voted upon at all of our town meetings, and we need participation from intelligent people on any side of the issue. So I encourage you all to show up. Officer Allen supplied us with some of the things that he's done for the high school this year. I don't even want to get into them because I almost started crying when I heard some of the trials and tribulations our students are going through at the high school on a day-to-day basis, and how he's intervening and, you know, trying to coach people away from making bad decisions and risky behaviors, and then dealing sometimes with the consequences of students who cross lines, and also unfortunately, sometimes the victims of other students who have crossed the line. Jim spoke eloquently to the fact that he's seen some of the same behaviors at the middle school that Michaela's seeing up here at the high school. It is not the same as it was back in your day when you were in middle school. It's transformed at an exponential rate, and it's not just because of social media. And it's not just because of the COVID crisis. It's everything that we face as middle schoolers has increased in its intensity and its frequency. And we need a presence at that middle school to try and send a proper message, to try and make some of those positive relationships from an authority figure. Someone who has a different eye than a classroom teacher, who can maybe prevent the preventable and mitigate the unpreventable. So I encourage anyone who hears this tonight to please attend the town meeting, and I would encourage you to vote in favor. It's short money for the safety of our students. $14,000 is what we're asking for Plimpton. $14,000 for the safety and security of our students at the middle school. Is it worth it? Thank you.
Question. You mentioned an intertown agreement to fund it outside the budget. What do we need to do to make that process, get that started for the fall or town meeting? Whatever we might need to do to set that up?
I think we've begun that conversation. When we walked away from the table, the finance committees, selectmen, chief of police is from two of the towns, school committee members, administrators, nobody walked away from that table angry. We agreed to continue the conversation. Fred from the Halifax Finance Committee, I made a pledge to him that even though I'm going to push the article to go through, that I would continue to work with all of the towns to try and make this a process that they all feel comfortable with. There's nothing illegal and proper about the process, but they don't like it. I would love to have a process that all of us agree on. We can walk away protecting our kids, paying for it, and not having it impact how many teachers I'm going to have to teach our kids this year.
Right, that's why I think the agreements probably need some sort of town meeting vote to establish, which probably will fall town meeting for Kingston, but I don't know what.
Right. If, I don't know the legality there, Chris, but just to give you an example, four, five years ago, Plimpton, the assessments were done, and we based our budget on the assessments that were done. Unfortunately, fortunately.
The final numbers from the state were vastly different.
Yes, yes, I remember that, yeah.
And so there was an agreement between the town of Kingston and the town of Plimpton. Plimpton repaid Kingston. That was completely separate. There was no...
It didn't flow through us all.
It didn't flow through us. I don't even remember that.
It was a agreement between the towns. They...
They had a warrant article, something separately, yeah.
But it was just, it was an intermunicipal agreement. And, you know, I use that as an example because, you know, Plimpton was not obligated. I mean, it wasn't that case suit up. They did the right thing.
That's why I wanted to get this as an article every year, or it's a mechanism that legally would be set up, or...
I don't believe it would be because it would be flowing into the budgets of the police.
Be their police to our police, and then transfers identifying costs to begin the season.
Exactly. And that line just goes to the power of funding. And that's how Rod and Old Rochester's doing it, and it makes, you know, it was like perfect sex. I mean, again, they're the closest and they have the exact same format.
I just don't want to go through this process again of having to bring a town meeting to say, okay, what do we have in resource officer or not come May of the month?
Yeah, absolutely. Come up with this year.
Right.
You worked with our council here at District to make this. We have worked with the towns. This wasn't a surprise that this article has come. I have a paper trail going back all the way to the fall where we were discussing this with the towns. Their apprehension about the article is something that just came to light when we went to the Halifax Finance Committee to have our conversation about the budget. What the articles will do for us is it will get us our school resource office of the next year and buy us a year of time to continue to work together with the towns to try and find a remediable solution.
Good, thank you.
I had put budget discussion down in case there was any need to discuss anything with budget. I did not have anything in particular or a concern that I needed to share, but this time of year, just it's always the same idea to have the words there. If anybody has anything they wanted to share with me, just let me know.
I forwarded Joy an email that I received from Melinda, who's the chair of the finance committee, who said that they were supporting the Silver Lake number, but not the warrant article. So I forwarded that to her.
Thank you. I meant to mention that. I also had it for that reason. So at this point, Kingston is supporting the budget, both finance and selectmen, and Halifax is voting the Silver Lake budget, both finance and selectmen. Based on that, we should be good at town meeting. My experience has been with finance and selectmen support the articles. We should be fine. We know we love the discussion, but we should be fine. Plimpton has not made any sort of a decision that I'm aware of. I have had a lot of emails back and forth, but they work in a slightly different timeframe. But if Kingston, Halifax come through, we should be all set with Halifax, not a Silver Lake budget. Plimpton is last, yes. So we should be all set. Also, on the town meeting warrants, just so you know, the capital plan is listed on that that is inclusive of it, which has always been a proper procedure. The towns love that we are self-funding with that. And I believe both the towns, I also listed OPEC this year.
It's on all of them, all that I've said to the towns.
I mean, not that we're putting in a ton, but we have an OPEC account. We started that four years ago when I started, and we're $13,000 at it. So we're good with that. Recognition of service. So we have a much-loved librarian here at the high school, Linda Reddy, who has been with us since we opened the school, and she is retiring this year. I have to tell you, I personally am devastated. Linda is absolutely phenomenal, what she brings to this building. She is just an incredible individual and is a librarian extraordinary. I personally have a huge spot for librarians, but she is really an exception. There has been a lot of discussion among the high school staff. They would be interested in whether or not we could do some sort of recognition of Linda here in this lovely library. One idea was whether or not the committee would have an interest or be willing to name the actual library after her. Another option we have, are we talking right here? We're there.
Either.
So the other options, the other options that Kayla and I had just very cursory conversations about, obviously, is to have a Redding reading nook, which I thought was particularly cute. I did come up with that one. Her word, her name is perfect for it. Where we would just have a little plaque, we would have a little reading area, maybe get some snappy chairs. Michaela can decorate it, which is her particular forte. And it would be pretty snappy, trust me on that, if Michaela's decorating. We would love to give her some sort of recognition. You know, this has really been a home base, and this is so much more for so many of our students and staff that we'd love to have some form of recognition. I realize I'm sort of springing it on you. We wanted to have it on here, but I didn't want to alert Linda. If, some of you may or may not know Linda. She was here. She is here definitely often. And with the gentleman who got locked out of teaching his CPR class, couldn't get it. I gave her my keys, and she was the one who ran him all the way across and came running back and actually returned my keys, which was great. But she would do anything for anybody. I mean, she truly is a phenomenal individual, so.
If there's any questions to consider, let's go ahead and follow.
When you say she's been here since the school opened, what, how long is that?
'06.
'06?
I believe it's '06. I should have checked that, but I believe it's '06. She, she was the Halifax librarian.
Halifax, I thought she was.
Yeah, she was the Halifax librarian, and when we opened the high school, she came over. I'm just about positive it's '06 because it was the year I started.
But I don't disagree, and I don't feel... But I don't disagree, and I don't feel strongly about, I just, do we have other people that have a lot of longevity in the schools that we're setting some kind of precedent? I just throw that out there. I'm not opposed to this idea by any means, believe me. I just, are we setting any kind of precedent?
And that was the idea of the Redding Reading Nook. It would just be a small area within that, you know, as opposed to, your opinion is something that's been expressed in other situations when we brought that up, and that's why we came up with the idea of the Reading Nook, where it would just be like a small area.
And then I echo the same sentiment that you just verbalized so well, when Joy first told me about this, is my concern, have we already missed people that we should have recognized in retrospect if we do this recognition as well? What if we missed someone some year and they feel slighted after giving us years of service because we don't recognize them as well? But at the same time, I understand the staff wanting to wrap their arms around someone, make them special and, you know, honor them this way. So I have no strong views on it, but I do have that caution as well. Anywhere else? Go ahead.
I'd be for the Nook.
I love that. That's a great sentence.
So it was already set. Maybe on tour after the course.
So how do you feel about it?
I don't think we should get into this because we'll be naming every single policy.
Yeah. So was yours a motion or just like how you feel?
I'm making a motion.
I'll second, you'll second that. Okay, is there any further discussion? And cautions that, is concern that we're doing about this on every corner? Go ahead, speak for yourself then.
It'd be something different if we have like somebody from our community that's a national hero, like an astronaut or somebody who is the commercial medal winner. I understand the difference in those types of things, but I need to maybe have reservations on that.
I would just add that, and I think the difference here would be that if the staff was kind of coming to and saying that they wanted to do this as well. So I think that gives it a little bit bigger goose than I would...
So I understand what you're saying. We've done the same thing down in Kingston in our schools.
What have you done?
We named the library after...
All part of the day.
Which you had.
We have an offensive, our KIS principals, our superintendent. We're running out of things to name. The part of the body is not the name.
So we have a motion, we have a second, we've had some discussions. Is there any other discussion about naming the Nook? This is going so well that we stand. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
With all due respect.
And I'm understanding. Okay, so. Can we have the four's please?
Okay. Two, four, six, eight, eight, four, one abstained, and two against.
Nine. Four.
Two, four, six, eight. Did you vote for Mike? I'm sorry, nine, sorry.
All right, great. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. All right.
Okay, so we have a...
You have your Nook.
We have a Nook.
A nice alliteration.
Maybe she won't watch the school committee, it'd be a surprise.
So what a day, but please.
Say, well, that worked.
Well, you did the dedication. All right, so we don't have any new business, but under old business, as we can do, student involvement, really have no news, I just wanted to keep it on there just to keep it in our, you know, our vision, especially with some of the changes we're going to be dealing with inside the conversations we're going to be having as a committee, we're going to have some student involvement. Do you have a date for elections yet?
It's not on the calendar, but they will be done by the end of May.
They'll be done by the end of May?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Pien and I are looking at dates, students need to do their speeches.
Okay, I'll just reach out to you so we can start coordinating, potentially get those students up to speed on some of the things we're doing. Maybe I could come and lead the group once they get elected.
Perfect.
All right, great, thank you very much. We left graduation requirements on, just to go over the fact again, you know, Jill was talking about some of the state requirements at the core, things that they want students to be learning before they graduate from high school. You know, we're a vocational, comprehensive high school, so some of our students don't take foreign language. We were trying to wrap our heads around whether or not adding foreign language to our graduation requirements would be something that we can handle or if that may cause, you know, some difficulties for our students to obtain their diploma. You know, we had some very intelligent comments made by our principal, and, you know, we investigated potentially bringing American sign language in as an alternative to a foreign language language. It's accepted by almost every college and university I could look up and find, as foreign language requirements, so that is an interesting idea. But we are meeting and exceeding many of the expectations that the common local Massachusetts has for graduating soon. So I was proud to find that out, and, you know, sometimes your investigation turns up roses. And I think that's what we had last, at our last meeting about our graduation requirements. So thank you very much for taking the time to bring us through that at the last meeting. And on to the marijuana resolutions. Eric?
Yeah, so after our last meeting, when we passed our resolution, Joy had put together a letter to the planning board in Kingston, to the Chair, informing them that, I think everybody has a copy of the letter, right? Yeah, so that letter was delivered to Tom Bouchard and also copied to Tom Coulter in the name of your age. And I went to the school committee meeting, I can't remember which day it was.
Planning board meeting.
I didn't go to the planning board meeting, I think I went to the Selectmen.
There you go.
Yes, Selectmen. Sorry.
It's a lot of meetings.
Yeah, I know. I went to the Selectmen's meeting and read this letter to the Selectmen, and that was on TV, so there it goes. And then at our elementary school committee meeting, we also passed the same resolution.
So can you reiterate the two points that we took out from the camera of us?
Yes, so I'll just read the letter really quickly here. Dear Mr. Bouchard, this letter is to inform you that at the Silver Lake Regional School Committee meeting on March 14th, 2019, the school committee unanimously voted to support a one-year moratorium on marijuana retail shops in the town of Kingston and not support a reduction in distance under 1,000 feet to a facility in which children congregate. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact the committee. Sincerely, Jason Frager, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Eric? Thank you, Eric. Okay, S.L.E.A. Anybody from here, S.L.E.A. who'd like to speak?
Hi. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Ashley Ferrara. I am one of the building reps here at the high school, and I just want to say thank you for all that you do for us. And if you didn't know, I also coached drama here, and I coached soccer in the fall. But I think last time, Kayla mentioned that we did something new for the first time with some of our kids, going to the Massachusetts Educational Theatre Guild Association, and some of our kids won awards that I guess I would compare to like All-Star Awards for the sports kids. And we won three acting awards, and Nook School won more than one of those, so we were kind of blown away. But of the, of the four that we won, three of our kids who won, our seniors are graduating, and we have a show coming up the week after vacation, the 25th and the 26th, it was 26th and 27th, Friday, Saturday. So if you want to see them one last time before they go, we'd love to welcome you to the show. The Friday one is at seven, and the Saturday one is at five, and there's an actor, crew talk back afterwards. So we'd love to set aside a ticket for you if you want to come. If you email Michaela, she'll tell us who said they want to be there, and we'll put the tickets aside for you, but we'd love for you to see them.
Sounds great. Congratulations.
Thank you. We were shocked.
You know, was this the first time you brought your students to that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so moving forward, if you know you're moving on to that level of competition, then, I mean, that's kind of like going to States, Reddles.
Yeah, it was crazy.
We would love to know just as much as any of our teams, so we can support them and wish them well. And absolutely, we'll be sending you up for tickets to the show.
Yeah, great. It's almost Maine, and I think it's one of the best script choices that we've had in a while, and the kids are loving it, they're so into it. It's a, it's an almost love story, and I guess is the best description of it. So anyways, thank you guys so much for everything.
Nice.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Are the three winners are graduating this year?
We had four winners, but three of them are graduating. So we had Quinn Bonneman, one for lead actor, he's a senior, John Cody, one for lead actor, also a senior, Caitlin Beckwith is a junior who won a lead acting award, and then we won a set design award. One of our seniors painted these incredible lockers just on wood that looked lifelike as if they were going open for part of our set, so.
Are any of them pursuing that, that field in college or after they graduate?
Quinn Bonneman is going to Brandeis, and I believe he is pursuing music. I'm not sure that he knows specifically which direction yet. John Cody's going to Brown, and they have an open curriculum, so I know that he's kind of just hoping for that. And Shelby Philbeck, who won the set design award, is pursuing arts. I'm not exactly sure where she's going, but...
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Wonderful, wow.
I was just going to ask, Ashley, if the students would be willing, they came in and did a performance for us for your town, which we all loved, to give a little extra publicity. So if they're available afterwards... Yeah, I'm sure they could come in and do a scene. The play is different in that there's eight scenes, and there's only two people on stage for any of them, so we'd probably just pick one scene with maybe two kids, but I'm sure they would love to do it.
Love to do it.
Yeah. I know, of course, they would love that. Yeah, yeah, of course.
So I just wanted to add, I mean, I know we do often talk about sports, and we see the robotics teams, and those things are great to prepare our kids, you know, beyond high school, but drama is often forgotten. And I think we need to remember, you know, as we do future budgets and things like that, you know, we're, we need to remember all the different aspects of education, including drama, and that skill, I could never do it. But to have that skill at a young age, to be able to stand on a stage and to speak, that's something that helps you in everything you do for the rest of your life, the ability to do that. And that's truly a life skill, I think, that, you know, helps everyone.
Yeah, and thank you to Michaela who supported us with this new endeavor that just ended up being, working out so well for them, so.
It's great to have your representation back at our meetings, we've missed you guys. So thank you for staying through the long meeting tonight.
Yeah, no worries. I'm probably going to take off.
Us too.
All right, on to admin review. Well, we got our evaluation today. Do you have anything to add, Mike?
Nope.
All right. Career technical education?
Nothing to add, no meetings. We have the open house or greenhouse somewhere in June.
I just want to mention for May, we will be having an allied health presentation, I believe. Elliot was planning on trying to bring in our allied health instead of our, oh, what is the group's called?
Advisory Committee.
That's the word, thank you. Instead of advisory committees.
Do you want to bring this up on your CTE?
Yes, sure.
Sure.
So Joy sent a letter in response to a request to use Silver Lake Regional High School career technical education facilities to administer an upcoming raft of the baking performance exams. So CTE has competitions as well for all of the different divisions, and they asked if they could use our facilities for the baking portion of their CTE competition. We agreed to allow them to come and use our facilities, right?
Yes, they did, that's true, yeah.
So Joy sent a letter thanking them for asking for us, and absolutely they could use our facilities, so they're going to be back this year.
Great.
Thank you. So call that CTE slash Chairman correspondence. So on to the chairman's report. Obviously, I got a devastating letter from our superintendent, who announced that she has decided to retire at the end of January 2020. And I read a sappy letter telling her how much she will be missed, but in addition to it being sappy, it was also the most honest thing I have written in a long time, especially in denoting how her ideals and her philosophy will echo through the hallways of our schools for years and years to come, and she will touch the lives of students she will never even be because of the legacy she leaves behind in our buildings. So thank you. So we also did send a letter out to the Chair of the Kingston Selectmen, thanking Kingston again, and the Chief of Police from Kingston, and the Fire Chief from Kingston for their help and support in putting together the grant that Senator DUC sent our way for improving the safety of our campus here at Silver Lake, in both the middle school and the high school. Again, can't say enough about Vinnie reaching out, but also it was a tight turnaround time. Vinnie gave it to me the minute it came to his desk. I gave it to Joy moments after Vinnie gave it to me, and, you know, within a week and a half, two weeks, Joy had pulled together all the major players, including the Police Chief and the Fire Chief of Kingston, to help her with some of the technical charging that we needed to put in to qualify for this. So hopefully, we will have great news for you in the near future. How much did our grant...
$80,000. $80,000. I also just want to mention Lieutenant Kelly, Lieutenant Tommy Kelly, was instrumental with grants. He apparently does a lot of grants for Kingston and was particularly strong with therapy. So they dedicated hours, I mean, we literally had hours in any meeting that I've had. I've always learned, people perform much better if you have food, and one of our, and people had just baked some brownies. So I bought a plate of brownies, and the grant was covered with brownie crumbs, but we got it done, we banked it out. So they were absolutely fantastic. They literally invested hours to help us get this stuff. Kingston Police, if we get this grant, will also benefit greatly because it helps them with communication on this whole side of town, getting this system in place. So we came up with a lot of great ideas, which I can share if we get the grant, I will inform you in case we don't, but I think we came up with a great plan, getting all the different facets needed. And Jim and Michaela, and their staff, several really jumped to get this information to me yesterday. So it was great.
And, I mean, that was $80,000 that we potentially get, you know, they've been called the Secretary of Safety to endorse our plan. That's in addition to the $75,000 you also put into the state budget that's already up in the bill. He made that commitment to us when we took some of the money out of our budget last year to finish the light project. He's a man of his word, he's put it in. He fully acknowledges that at this point in the budget, it might get him done, but he sits on the conference committee, and he will back in the conference committee if it gets pulled out prior to that point, and he is fairly confident that that statement he'll be able to get it passed. So thank you to Senator DUC also for his help with us making our schools a safer place. So some more information, some more materials have been coming out in recent weeks from the State Department of Public Health about anti-vaping and cigarette smoking materials. Chris was kind enough to send us along, to Joy and myself. We reached out to Margaret Jamison, who said that she's also received some of the same material. It's things like stickers and posters that we can put up in our schools just to have that constant reminder that vaping is no safer than cigarette smoke. If you look at the Food and Drug Administration, they're really starting to clamp down on some businesses and organizations for their blatant marketing towards the youth. And this is becoming an epidemic in our state, especially with the introduction of readily available THC oils that can be consumed in very discreet ways. Those old e-cigarettes that used to puff up like a cloud around your head, they still exist, but the technology out there to tune e-cigarettes to the point that there is no visible vapor coming out of it, no odor as well, is well within the hands of 12, 13, and 14-year-olds. It's scary, and anything helps. Chris, thank you for passing this along.
No problem. Anyone else wants to email from Janet Wade out of Kingston, Florida Health, what happened Florida? I have materials here, if anyone's interested, just peek at some of the stuff.
Do you have some?
I've read through a few, yeah. It certainly passed around.
Chris.
Yeah, I've heard tons of big copies. Picture the book. But there are stuff like window decals, Jason said, and stuff. But they are stuff like window decals, Jason said, and stuff. You can put them on the mirrors and the basins, you can put them wherever you need, panties for parents. I think that might be a reasonable next step, is to think of how we can get some of these materials to parent. I know we've had vaping nights and so forth, and educational nights here, but this material's pretty eye-opening in terms of how severe and bad some of this stuff is. I don't even make too much of it, just glance and pass. But yeah, it was a very welcome email from Janet.
Yeah, infographics is what kids understand.
Exactly.
Quick, bite-sized chunks of information that they can digest and comprehend.
That's the basis, I think, of the window, of the mirror decals. You just put in the management woman's room and say, while you're doing this in here, here's what it's doing to you.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. I also received correspondence from Eric, representing the gridiron boosters for athletics, talking about the scoreboard, working with Martha and Data Tron, so that's us over there. Does that sound?
Yeah, just give you an update. So we started talking over a year ago when the lights were, when we first started looking at replacing the lights. Martha was looking at replacing the scoreboard. The scoreboard was from 1992.
Two.
Two, thank you. The parts are very difficult, it's often impossible to find, so like fuses, those sorts of things. So if anything goes wrong with it, it's hard to do anything with it. So at the time, she looked at video scoreboards like other districts are doing, and the reason you go into video scoreboards is so that you can then sell advertising rather than just putting one name on the scoreboard, you know, like on a stadium kind of thing. You could run advertisements, full-blown commercials on the board, that you could then sell to local businesses. So the idea, and she was starting to work with Dectronics, which is a national company that does these scoreboards. They do it in colleges as well. So the idea is that what a lot of school districts are doing is entering into contract agreements with local businesses to purchase advertising time, which comes out of a different bundle of money. It's not just, you're not just going to get a donation, they're actually purchasing advertising. So I guess a lot of car dealerships, banks, you know, companies that would target their products or services to students or their families, and I guess it's been very successful. So I think at this point, the board that she's looking at is around a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Obviously, you know, we don't have money, and we don't, from a school committee perspective, we don't want to have to spend more money on things like this. The idea is that Dectronics can go out and start working with businesses to get the contracts in place for the advertising, and they would put in like a five-year contract for advertising to come up with the money to cover payments. So this goes back to leasing, which we talked about last year for the lights. But in this case, you know, because we're not going to come up with a hundred and forty thousand dollars in one year, it would be over a certain amount of years, so probably five years. So if you did a five-year lease, roughly thirty thousand dollars, maybe a little bit less depending on the interest rate. The idea is if they could come up with the money to cover that, then they would come back to the school committee and ask to enter into a lease. But I think the point that Martha's at, and I don't know if you've had time to talk to her recently.
Our paths did not cross today.
Yeah. So I think what Dectronics wants to do is that they want to get the okay that if they go out and get these contracts, that the school committee is behind it. So we probably need to have all of that information presented at like a safer subcommittee meeting. I don't know if we have one scheduled for May or not, or if we could schedule one.
We probably would be, because we've got some open things that we should bring some closure to.
Right. So, and the idea is, you know, we would use it at all the home games, graduation, you could videotape, and it would be a live feed, so you could do rerun, replays, instant replays up on the board, but also for graduation, you could actually videotape the kids getting ready in the gym before they come out, so the parents, as they're sitting down there, they can see them coming out on their way. But you could also sell messages up on the board, you know, just like you do in a program, but it could be up on the board. And I know I get there at eight o'clock in the morning to get my seat for graduation, so, you know, you could play these ads all day long. And then there's a sound system involved, so I know right now we spend like three thousand, you said?
It's between three and five.
Yeah.
Each year for sound.
Yeah, so we wouldn't have to do that anymore. It would be covered through the scoreboard. And the other idea is that we would be pulling in more money than what we'd be paying out in the lease payments, whether it's through straight advertising or also messages and things like that at graduation. And that extra money that we could start pulling in could go into, I mean, it's up to us, but maybe some fund to go towards athletic capital projects. I know there's, she's looking at, you know, concession stands, fixes, you know, make it ADA compliant. There's a longer-term look at a turf field, because we're one of the few schools without a turf field. I think football prefers to play on grass because it's one of the few grass fields, but there's so many teams here. There's now six lacrosse teams. I think there's a freshman boys' team now, and they're running out of fields, and they, currently, they don't use that field in the spring, so it can rest for the fall sports. So turf, longer field, longer term, is something that I think might be exciting. But that's a big.
So let's bring it back to the scoreboard we're setting. You're saying that it's about a hundred fifty thousand dollars, they're willing to enter into a five-year lease. We would be liable to pay that, but they would go out and try and secure us at least thirty thousand dollars a year in advertising before we would sign that lease? Or we have to sign a lease first?
No, no, no. So based on my understanding, they just need to get the okay that if they do get those contracts in place, then you'll move forward. My understanding is that nothing would need to be signed. We could clarify that with Martha and the Dectronics route, but they have a whole, you know, they do this nationwide, so they have their financing, we have more to PNC, but we can do it with rent money.
It's not like more lights yet, because the problem with the lights is they were asking us to be on the hook for the price of lights, and they had no methodology yet at that point to fund it year by year.
Correct.
This is a totally different mechanism.
It is. So we'd be self-funding and hopefully turn a profit, that we use that excess money. And again, this is where we need to be thinking out of the box, you know, how are we going to fund all these different projects that we want?
So as a breakdown, this just came in through correspondence, so we're not even going to really go much further with this, but Mike, if anybody has a question.
Yeah, similar question. So do they cap it at thirty, or do they, is that their cap?
Yeah.
They'll keep going, right?
Oh, yeah. I don't know that they, there is a car dealership in town, I don't say who it is, but I think that we could get ten grand a year out of them. I don't think we'd get five of them, you know, but I think, you know, like local banks, you might get five or six, you know what I mean? Again, it's going to be insurance companies, banks, car dealerships. They had a car dealer do this in another, at another school, I don't remember what school it was, they were just talking about it. It was a Ford dealer, and on opening night for the football season, they brought in ten cars in the parking lot from the Ford dealer, and they had a big to-do, you know, thank you for, you know, sponsoring us, and he sold all ten cars. He was like, that paid, and I think he had promised like ten or twenty grand a year. He's like, this is great. If I sold this much in one night, you know.
Interesting. Go ahead.
Do they get a portion of the sales above?
No. I should probably double-check that, but my understanding is no. They're doing this, they're doing the whole marketing thing, and it's not just them going out and doing it. They said they will need the coaches and players and other people involved to help make the case to these businesses, so they're not doing it completely on their own.
No, we got to go and get the leads too.
Correct. And help make the case.
You get chain restaurants and?
Mm-hmm, anybody.
Or like.
The other thing is, so like.
I think we just have to be careful about with food and beverages, the time of day we advertise those.
That's correct. For like Dick's Sporting Goods, when we approached them a year ago for the lights, they said, no, but we'd give you fifty grand for a scoreboard. So you can have the advertising that you're selling that is on the video, but you can actually put the name of a company, I don't know what they call it, anchor sponsor or something, that their name is actually.
Permanent fixture.
Permanent. Not permanent, permanent, because they said you sell it for like a five-year term, and at the end of that five years, they can re-up, or somebody else can.
Take their swap.
So a company like Dick's might throw away some money, you know. The idea is it wouldn't come out of their budget.
I'm going to make an ancillary comment that's almost not worth making, but I, we kind of slammed Dunkin' Donuts, not slammed, but we talked about Dunkin' Donuts can't be part of the, you know, advertising, blah, blah, blah. I caught on the news a couple of weeks ago after our meeting, Boston Children's Hospital had a wonderful prom-like gala for their sick teenage kids that they're helping, you know, from a medical perspective, and you know who sponsored that, was Dunkin' Donuts. And it's just shameful, in my opinion, that Dunkin' Donuts can't, you know, I get the whole wellness thing and everything, but Boston Children's Hospital, they had a wonderful event, thanks to Dunkin' Donuts.
But again, it's only during the.
But it's only until two-thirty.
Right, right. No, I know, I know, but it's acceptable by Boston Children's Hospital.
So they could purchase, they could sign on for advertising, they couldn't just be an anchor.
They couldn't be an anchor, right?
Yeah. I'm off my soapbox. I had to just say that because it jumped out at me.
We've had a rough night. You can say anything.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you for the time, too. Absolutely. Okay, so that's it for the chairman's report. On to the legislative agents' report. Yesterday, the House Ways and Means Committee met. Their budget in terms of schools isn't much different from the governor's proposal. It's a two-hundred-and-thirty-six million dollar-ish increase from last fiscal year to the coming fiscal year, and the impact on Silver Lake is negligible at this point, but there's still some steps to go through. The House has to vote, then it goes to the Senate Ways and Means, then the Senate votes, and the conference committee happens. So we're probably in the second or third inning at this point for the state budget. It's early in the process. The per pupil minimum increment, which would help us to a certain extent, got increased to thirty dollars per student. Again, last year, we had one of the all-time high per pupil improvement increases. We were above fifty dollars last year. We're hoping for a hundred dollars per student this year. I would like to thank Senator Grady, Senator DeMecino, and Representative Winatra for sending on to the letter asking for the per pupil minimum increment to be raised to a hundred dollars per student. Again, that would have an effect for Silver Lake of bringing in a hundred seventy-two thousand more dollars in state aid to our schools here on campus. So I'd like to thank Representative Copler from Duxbury for writing that letter and bringing it to the Ways and Means Committee, and he says he's going to continue to push that forward as the budget process goes on. If you've been paying attention to the receipts at the state level, we had a windfall last month, so that deficit we were incurring has been wiped out, but it's a roller coaster right now, and nobody knows where the budget's going to end. It's barely a surplus at this point, it's nothing to write home about, so stay tuned. I did send out an email to the people on my MASCE list, just giving some of the things that came out of the House Ways and Means. I can add anybody else to that who wants to get that email as well. So thank you very much. Moving on to Pat, any more?
Uh, yes, they're in the process of looking for a building to purchase. Their idea is to reduce their rent and put the money from rents in different locations into the new building that they would own, and possibly reduce their expenses.
What would also be awesome is the consistency that that would provide for our students who'd be sent to the lab.
They're at the beginning stages of the process. They're putting sixteen thousand dollars into effectively a home inspection and stuff like that. They have a building merchant.
Great, that's great, Chris, thank you. And on to policy. So I would like to make a motion to waive the actual reading of the policies.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'd like to make the motion to accept policy ADF, JFABE, JFADE, JFAEF. All right, is there any discussion? That's the first reading? That's the first reading?
This is the first, yes.
That's the first?
Yeah.
So just in case you didn't know, we did have a policy subcommittee meeting. We went over all of the changes that were made, and this brings us into compliance. We would desee once for the warning. Again, thank you to Jill and our central office staff for figuring out the proper verbiage to put into these policies. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Moving on to revolving funds.
No meeting, we need that presentation back here.
Yeah, absolutely. And it seems like she's doing a great job mentioning that program, looking for revenue streams. Moving on to safety facilities, fees, and revenues.
No needing, but I would suspect that we're close to getting the rest of the information we need on the roof and the water treatment. We've gotten a lot of information on the water treatment plant, we're close to having enough to say that we, you know, we can button that down. Long story short, is the next meeting will have a solid update.
Okay, great, thank you very much. School start times. Just wanted to keep it there, there has been some MASCE workshops on school start times recently, and the first of them is actually available for you at MASCE's website if you want to watch it at the leisure. Treasuries report.
Okay, this month, we have twenty-one warrants going around. Sixteen of them are day-to-day, two of them are student activity, and three of them are payroll. Sixteen day-to-day come to a total of two million, three hundred and thirty-four thousand and two hundred and forty-six dollars and two cents. The student activities, it's going to be thirty thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-two cents, and they've come a grand total of two million, three hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars, ninety-four cents. And then payrolls come out to being two million, three hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty-six cents, for a grand total of four million, seven hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, seven hundred and thirty, six, seven hundred and three, and twenty-six.
Thank you very much. Do we have any single signature warrants?
There were none, but we will get back into that process again.
Fantastic. Michaela, when is graduation for the record?
June first.
At what time?
Eleven a.m.
Eleven a.m.
All of you are invited, and you're welcome to sit on stage during the ceremony. Just let me know ahead of time if you plan to be there or not.
Why, did you hear the question? The awards night, is that May thirtieth?
Is that the Thursday? Yes.
Okay.
At six p.m.
Yeah.
It's a time change from years past.
Okay. So some future dates that are important. Next week is vacation. Congratulations to all the students and teachers for making it to their vacation week. It's well deserved, especially for those students who just recently completed some MCAS testing. On April twenty-seventh, Kingston will have town elections, and on May fourth, Kingston will have a town meeting. On May thirteenth, we have the Halifax Town Meeting, and on May fifteenth, we have the Plington Town Meeting. On May eighteenth, Halifax and Plington will have town elections. And then we have a school committee meeting at the middle school, going to Jim's house on May twenty-third. On May thirtieth, at six o'clock, will be the awards banquet, and on June first, at eleven a.m., it will be the graduation. I want to wish any of the candidates for any of the elective offices in our three towns good luck at the polls, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Subsumed. Check. All is in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. You forgot to save it.